Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee Meeting. Robbie G. McKinney, Council Chambers, Tuesday, November 17th, 2015, 7:00 PM. Roll call?
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Mrs. Condon?
Excused.
Excused.
Mr. Jovan?
Present.
Mr. Lazo?
Present.
Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Ms. Peliquin?
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Before we do the salute of the pledge of allegiance, I should say, I'd like to call for a moment of silence for the people in France, for the tragedy that happened in Paris, and it's on all of our minds, and I know that we have a Mr. Olivo, a military gentleman on the school committee, so I'd like to call for a moment of silence. Thank you very much, I'd like to go to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to agenda item number three, public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee? Nobody on public input, moving on to approval of minutes, November 3rd, 2015, regular?
Second.
Motion to second. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present?
One abstention.
One abstention? Oh, that's right. Mr. Olivo is an abstention, not present. Moving on to chairman's announcements, I'd just like to say I do not have any announcements tonight. With a long week without meetings, there's really nothing to report back outside of. I'd just like to welcome the new interim superintendent onboard, Timothy Connors. We've already sat down, we've met, and we've talked, and it seems like we've got a great leader, a good communicator, a person that understands what has to be done in Southbridge, and he seems to be enjoying himself, so it's a good start, and I'm looking forward to a good relationship. Can we just hear it, Friday Superintendent? Thank you very much, Tim. Moving on to presentations, there are no presentations here tonight. Moving on to committee reports, agenda item number seven, school committee negotiations. Mr. Bishop?
Not to report this time of contract.
Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Jovan?
No report, no meeting scheduled.
Budget Finance Subcommittee, Dr. Page?
No report, meeting will be tentatively scheduled after the holiday break.
Superintendent's search, the chairman is not here, but I would like to just comment, tonight we will be appointing three more people for the three vacancies that we have on the committee, and we will continue the search, as Ms. Condon might be here later on, she's running late. Moving on to student representative to the school committee, Diego Royal. Diego?
Hello, everybody. So, the Thanksgiving rally is on Tuesday, the 24th, it's going to be two periods long, and the themes for the rally is the decades. Sunday morning at 9:00 AM is sketch day, and Monday night from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM is paint night. Spirit Week is going to start tomorrow, it's going to be pajama day, then Thursday's going to be Would You Be My Friend If I Wore This?, then Friday's going to be twin day, Monday is going to be sports day, and Tuesday, we're going to wear our class shirts. Homeroom teachers will keep score. Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 25th, is the bonfire at McMahon Field, an alumni football game. Lions Club Dinner is next Tuesday for football players and cheerleaders, and the coat drive is still in session, and you can pass in gently worn coats at the high school and middle school main offices. December 2nd, Student Council is setting up a giving tree in memory of friends and families that were diagnosed with cancer, and the Interact Rotary Club helped with town decorations, also setting up mentor programs with seniors and eighth graders. Also, students participated on a quiz show at WBGH, the coaches were Ms. Earls and Mr. Martin Rosin. The students that participated were Michael O'Brien, Gianna O'Brien, Ryan Peters, Taylor Faraco, Kalen Gonye, and Bill Chang. Everyone that got honor roll this quarter received certificates, and we took pictures, and the school's posting them on the high school Facebook page. Students of the quarter gets a breakfast during first period one day. For student of the quarter for music is Yvonne Boadry, library is Cheyenne Reno, science is Fernando Reyes, special education is Samuel Rodriguez, VHS is Bill Chang, social studies is Owen Frazel, math is Giselle Morales, world language is Jesselyn Rodriguez, wellness is Tanner Renaud, and English Kenny Allard, and the principal award goes to Gio Rosario. November 23rd, American Red Cross in Harrington Hospital is providing CPR training for the entire school. We're going to be the first school in central Mass to do so. Also, this Thursday, Kunsig Community College is doing an interview, and they're confirming if the student gets accepted to the college on the day. For the middle school, Mr. Wallace and Ms. Sweetman made a surprise celebration for 401 school students that did not get an office referral. It was, the surprise was a dance this past Friday with a free DJ, and over 300 students attended for the dance. It was from 3:30 to 5:30 PM, and my little brother went, and he said he had a lot of fun. So, the middle school is starting to do this Pioneer Passports thing, where if a student is well behaved, it will be noticed, and they're given a slip that says that they've been behaving, and then they can go to a social event like that, and it's positive reinforcement, so we encourage good behavior. And NHS is making three Thanksgiving baskets to donate to families, and they also set up tutoring hours for December.
Thank you. Moving on to 7-3, Finance Director. Finance Director is not here, he is at another meeting at this time. Moving on to Superintendent's Report, Timothy Connors.
I chose to come over here because what I like to do at every board meeting is share some things that are going on in the community, hopefully show you some of the things that are happening with our children and in our schools. I have the opportunity the last two weeks, really, but the last five days that I've been employed, and I see our principals and one of our assistant principals here, Mr. Scanlon, and the chairman of the committee actually said the same thing. I think we have a great team in our schools. When I walk through the schools and I see our children, I see our teachers, I see our principals leading them, I think we've got a great crew of principals, they're good instructional leaders, they're new to this game, but they've been in schools for a lifetime, so it's not foreign to them. So, with the leadership from the school committee and the hard work of our principals, Sharon's got them working hard every day, and I have to try to balance that so we don't overwork them. And they come to these meetings because I think they know, as you do, it's important that everybody sees us as a team. I send a letter out to the parents, telling them that I was here, that one of the things I feel real good about is that last week you asked for some volunteers to come forth for the search committee, I put it in my letter, and I know that they're on the agenda tonight, people have responded to that. So, if the parents will also respond, what I've asked of the principal, of the parents, to make sure that they reach out to your teachers and to you, and help in any way that they can. I know one parent that's here this evening, he accidentally went and volunteered in her child's classroom. Those are the kinds of things that we need to do. So, I think we're in a good place, I know that you got off to a great start with the opening of school with everybody together, and that's really, it's got to be the theme for us, that we work together, we support one another, and that everybody in the school district become a cheerleader for the Southbridge Public Schools. I think we have great schools, we have great kids, and we have the opportunity to move forward. I noted in the paper today that the commissioner has put off the new testing for another two years, which is great, so we want to put that away anyway, and then we're going to make sure that we work real hard so that the state understands, as we do here in this community, that we have special schools, we're great leaders, and wonderful young people, and if we work together, we can build on the legacy of our school district. There are some good things happening in our school coming up, if I can get this to go the right way. At the elementary school, they're ending their first trimester, and at the middle high school, at the high school, really, I think that's only there and not at the middle school, the principal was all excited, she sent me a letter, they got a grant so that all of the seniors, and you correct me if I'm wrong, in the middle school as well, all of our students are going to be trained in CPR. I don't know if you recall, a couple of years ago, there were two little boys, 11 and 12 years old, that they saved a child because they learned, every day they went by the gym, they saw a sign that told them what to do if a person needed CPR, and a mother in their neighborhood come running out screaming, "My child is dying, my child is dying," and the two little boys followed back in, and they saw what was going on, and they said to the mother, "Call 911, please," and they administered the CPR, and when they asked them how they did it, they learned it in school, and I know in other places that I've been, so if you've got nothing to do on the 23rd, take a ride up to the high school, they're going to be doing it all day, right? So, it's going to start at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning, and I think it's a great service to the community, and it's a kind of life skill that children can learn, and they make it fun and learning. The Thanksgiving break is coming up, and parents need to know that next week is a short week, we're out Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then there's an early release day on Friday, December 4th, and I know parents sometimes don't like that, but with all the professional development that we have going on, it's just really necessary to do that. You heard from Diego, and I was up to school, I met one of the captains of the football team, they're so excited about the upcoming football game, that I thought I'd have to show you a couple of slides with that. But first, I want to go to Charlton Street Elementary School, and they held their annual Veterans Day program in honor of veterans on Tuesday, November 10th. You can see from the pictures up there that this place was packed, the principal did a wonderful job of introducing it, and then she just had to step back, and her teachers and the young people took over, and I think all of the veterans, all of the parents, everybody that was in the audience, including school board members, were just really proud to be there, proud of our school, proud of our children, and part of the people that have served our country. So, that was a really, Mary, that was really great, not Mary, that was just a really great day, and so many thanks to everybody that attended, the performers and the speakers, and of course, the performers were our children, there was one little young lady, that just everybody in the place, you could hear them talking about her, and I said to the principal, "She's pretty special," she said, "Yeah, I know her, she's a real joy." So, that was just a nice day, and those are the kinds of things that we should do together for all the people in this community. I'm going to skip over that for a moment, I asked the coach, "How are things going?" Because I got a chance to see him up at the high school before the last game, and I enjoyed meeting him, I know he's been here for a long time, and they didn't, the game didn't turn out the way they wanted the other day, but overall, they had a good season. And I met the, one of the captains of the football team yesterday, and I can't tell you how excited he is. I didn't realize that this is the second oldest Thanksgiving Day high school game in the country, and you can tell that some of the history from that has been passed down because he and his senior members of the team are just really excited about being there. You pointed out a lot of the activities that are going to be there, and I hope that everybody will look at the Thanksgiving Day events, and that if you're looking forward to your Thanksgiving Day dinner, there's nothing better than going to a high school ballgame and seeing our kids play. So, those are the kinds of things that make us proud, and I believe what I see in our classrooms, what I see going on with teaching and learning, that we're going to continue to build on that, so that when we get to the end of the school year, we're going to be pretty proud of our accomplishments, always proud of our young people, and pretty thankful for the leadership that we have in our schools. And I'll try each week when we come to share with you things that are going on, get some pictures of our kids. I went out to recess the other day, not to recess, actually, the afternoon break, with the preschool youngsters, and when I look at the energy that had, I just kind of sat and thought, "It's cold out here, but the teachers are probably glad they're getting a break, just watching that energy be burnt up." So, those are the things and the ways that children learn that people don't count on. We'll take care of the learning part, have high expectation, I told the high school staff today that my job is that I have high expectations for myself, as the board does, and that we all have high expectations for everyone, so that we work our hardest to make sure that we help our students to maximize their ability and potential for learning. One of the nice things for me last week, when I walked through the cafeteria, I looked down, and I see our student member of the school committee was able to say, "Hi, Mr. Connors," and made me feel pretty good, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent's Report, thanks, Tim. Moving on to school committee action, agenda item number eight, vote to ratify the contract for the interim superintendent for the period of November 9th, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Do I hear motion?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion. If there's no discussion, roll call.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Peliquin?
Yes.
Six yes.
Moving on to 8-2, vote to appoint Tim, Mr. Timothy Connors to serve as delegate to the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year. Do I hear motion?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to three, vote to approve the class of 2016 trip to Honors Haven Resort in Ellenville, New York, from May 6th, 2016 to May 8th, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion. Mr. Jovan?
Is this a different trip than the one that we approved last week, or is there a change in date? Because we approved it last week.
I will answer this question, and if there are any further questions, I'll ask Mr. Martin, the class advisor. This is a date move because it conflicted with another date at the high school, as far as having the students in the district for the other date that we already voted on. So, what we're doing is we're just changing the date.
Okay.
We already approved the trip, but...
No, so it's not a motion to reconsider and re-vote?
No, it's just a motion to, it should be just a motion to change the date.
Make a motion to amend this, to vote to approve the change of the class of 2006 trip to Honors Haven Resort in Ellenville, New York, from May 13th, 2016 to May 15th, to 2016, to a new date of May 6th, 2016 to May 8th, 2016.
Second.
Is a motion, a second, on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I think if we don't do that, we're in essence approving two separate trips.
No, I understand.
So, I...
This is a typo from the front office.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present on the amendment. Main motion as amended. There's a motion on the floor and a second already, discussion? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to four, vote to confirm the appointment of Superintendent Search Committee member, Mrs. Emily Mantenio.
Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion. If there's no further discussion, do you have comment? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to five, vote to confirm the appointment of Superintendent Search Committee member, Mrs. Rebecca Choquette. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Do I hear a second? Is a motion, a second, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to six, vote to confirm the appointment of, to the Superintendent Search Committee member Pierre-Pierre Canoye?
Second.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Is a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to unfinished business, agenda item number nine, is there any unfinished business at this time? If there is none, we're moving on to new business. One, the new regularly scheduled meeting date will be held Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Any other new business? If none, moving on to Members Forum, agenda item number 11, are there any members who would like to speak at this time? Ladies before gentlemen?
Okay, I just have a couple of quick things. The first is, I'd really like to thank the committee and the community at large for supporting me in my attendance to the MASC conference recently. I went November 4th through the 7th, and I was able to get all of my state mandated compulsory training for being a school committee member taken care of at that conference. I did Basics of Policy, Cultural Proficiency, School Law 101, Improving Early Education for All Students, Turnaround Work, Moving Underperforming Schools to Excellence, and I also did New Member Orientation Parts 1 and 2. So, and I feel like the more I learn about education, I feel like the more I need to learn about education, there's just so much out there, but this was just a really valuable opportunity for me, I was able to meet other school committee members from across the state, and I really can't say just how important it is, I want to be able to take on as many educational opportunities as I can to learn to be a better school committee member. One more thing, I also went to the Veterans Day Celebration at Charleston Street School, and I wanted to thank all of the students who did a fantastic job, and the teachers and the principal, Mrs. Mantenio, for putting together a really fantastic program, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Jovan?
I'll defer if they want to go fountain line.
Olivo?
All right. Okay. First, I just want to announce that on Saturday night, the 21st, is going to be the Second Annual Big Old Turkey Bowl, Sean Moriarty has put this together, we were fortunate enough to do a little public announcement the other night, and we got to that, that school and town officials going up against Webster. Last year was very successful, some of the proceeds will go to the Toys for Tots and other charities. I know Mr. Case and Ms. Earls played last year, and we've lost a couple of the key players that played last year, so we're looking for some people to step up. I will be doing the TV again, along with Mr. LaFlesh, the superintendent at Bay Path, will be calling it for the cable access. At 5:30, there'll be a pump, pass, and kick challenge, that'll start at 5:30, there'll be different age groups for 6 and under, 7 to 9, 10 through 12, and 13 to 15. There'll be prizes, and that is being sponsored by One Pool, Lawn Mower and Snow Blower Shop in Southbridge, so I invite everybody to come out. I believe they'll be taking canned goods for a food drive as well, maybe we can get a couple of the principals to play as well, that'd be nice. Ms. Mantenio, right? Ms. Sweetman? Ms. Stanton? I see you laughing, you may have to be there, too. So, wish everybody to come to that, wish everybody a safe Thanksgiving as well. I did have the opportunity along with my colleagues, Ms. Peliquin and Mr. Bishop, to attend the MASC conference. I have to say that this was a well-run and some very good seminars at that conference. Had the opportunity to meet with different colleagues throughout the state and attend several sessions. Had the opportunity, along with Mr. Bishop, to meet the Holyoke Receiver, interesting conversation with him about the changes that they're trying to do in Holyoke, a young gentleman, he seemed very nice. I did speak to the Holyoke Chairman of the school committee as well, and asked him about, you know, because there's been a lot of dialogue in town about the state and where we stand, about what is it differently that they're doing now with the receiver as opposed to what they were doing before that? And quite frankly, he said, "Nothing, it's essentially the same." And I really challenge anybody, if you go on the Holyoke Public Schools website, to see the entry plan for the Holyoke School District that was done by the receiver, there really is nothing substantially different than what we have in place. The AIP that was done by Superintendent Stanton and the team of principals really is an aggressive plan. I did have the opportunity to go and sit in a session on communication with DESE, feeling that my last go-around with DESE needed a little bit of a, just to put a face with DESE to say, "Hey, we may be frustrated at times, but we are really looking in the best interest of our students." And I wanted to convey to, it was actually Brooke Clenchey that was the person that was heading that little topic, I wanted to convey the fact that we do have a very good team in place, and she had gotten feedback from the team that was here that said, "Yes, there were a lot of very good things happening in Southbridge," she spoke strongly about some of the initiatives that we have in place, and she was aware of the fact, and she said quite frankly, you know, "We are, we do have our eye on Southbridge, and we know what's going on," which is fine, and I think that's a great place to be. She did ask if we had appointed the interim superintendent, which I indicated that we were in the process of doing so, and the big question was, I had a conversation with her about the Accelerated Improvement Plan, and they were, again, spoke very highly about the Accelerated Improvement Plan that was done by Superintendent Stanton and the team of principals and the staff in Southbridge, and the question was, "Who's doing that work?" And I reiterated to her that our plan really, as a school committee, is to work together with our administration to implement that plan and execute that plan, and she seemed to really thank me for that dialogue that we had, because I said, "Look, our bottom line is to make sure that whatever we do, the expectation is on learning and what's best for children." I think that's everything that we ever say up here as a school committee, is what we do is in the best interest of our students in Southbridge to help change or achieve that gap. And I also conveyed the message that, the stability, and that was really what this, what she took away as the key crux of some of the problems that we have, is that stability, and I think any decisions that we are making now is what's best to keep it stable. So, we'll see what the state comes out and says, but I do have high hopes that they see the fact that we are putting the pieces in place to be stable, to make good decisions, and I know we can get there. One of the other sessions that I attended also was the issue of poverty and student achievement, and as well as the big overall action topic on this MASC conference with a lot of the speakers is social emotional learning. And I know Superintendent Stanton last year had tried to get some of those pieces in place, and I think that's a dialogue that we as a school committee need to take with Superintendent Connors in this budget cycle, as to what decisions do we make to address that social emotional learning, and I'm sure Mr. Bishop can highlight some of the things that he had heard at the Chapter 70 funding, but that is a big topic, and what is the relationship? You really don't, we know our social economic standard in town and some of the issues that our kids have, and how is that effective to their ability to learn or change that achievement gap? So, I think those are the type of discussions now that we've settled as a school committee, and we have the right people in place right now, that those are the discussions that we can have as a school committee with our administrators, as to what are the pieces that we can put in place to affect student learning, and that is the key. It is interesting to see the commissioner making the changes with the testing, and how that's going to affect us, and that's a dialogue that I think that we have to have as a school committee, as to where do we see ourselves in the next two years with Superintendent Connors and Superintendent Stanton, as to what test are we going to do as the state decides how they're going to implement the testing? And it's interesting that, in one of the sessions, the same session with DESE was, "Do we test too much?" But really, that is the crux of conversation. Yeah, we do test a lot, because there's expectations that kids need to pass the test, and then the state turns around and says, "Well, we don't, we didn't tell you you needed to do all this testing, but in order to make changes and make sure that instructional components are being done in the classroom, we're doing the DIBELS testing, the ANET testing, or whatever testing we're doing." So, really, we have to do that to justify our MCAS. So, a lot of dialogue, I think that we need to change the dialogue as a school committee to become more aggressive as to the plan in place to affect student learning, budgetary process, and what are the tools that we need to get out to our staff, administration, and students for success, but I know that we do have the team to succeed. So, thank you, I was a little long-winded, but there was a great wealth of information that we did gain at that conference, and a lot of food for thought that as a school committee, you need to take back and really hit the ground running in the upcoming new year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I discuss some of the MASC things, I would like to ask Mr. Jovan...
Before I discuss some of the MAS C things, I would like to ask Mr. Jovan through the chair, if we've had any movement on the discussion about uniforms. We all received an email earlier this year from a parent who wanted us to look into the concept of uniforms. I have my own personal opinion, I'm not advocating for them, I'm not advocating against them. But I think it's a dialogue that is, parents are looking to have addressed by policy. So maybe if we could put that on a future policy agenda.
It's interesting that you did say, because I did note that right on my note right here, Mr. Bishop, January school uniform policy that in the top, when I said no report, no meeting scheduled, I jotted that down that, as you're sitting here reflecting, that yes, that is a topic.
Appreciate it, because the parent had reached out to us. Going back to the MAS C conference, I had an opportunity to attend eight hours worth of different courses. Two-hour session was on Chapter 70. Chapter 70 is the funding mechanism, which we really take great advantage of here in Southbridge. And it was interesting during this entire conference that the real theme was social emotional, as Mr. Jovan said, really trying to address the needs of our ELL, low-income and sped populations. Right now, there's a major push afoot to change the funding of Chapter 70. It would really benefit towns with the demographics that Southbridge have, but also 181 towns and cities wouldn't receive any benefit from the change that they're advocating. So I think we as a community really need to get behind this proposed change when it comes out. Funding for it's about $2 billion that will be pumped back into public education, which a think tank in Boston said in the past month is the number that's really needed to improve education in our Commonwealth right now. The funding they're advocating coming from the top 1% of the income earners in Massachusetts, anybody who earns over $1 million a year would be the targeted tax burden holders on this proposal. So that leaves me out of the equation, I don't know about anybody else sitting here. However, I think the time is going to come when we're going to need to really, as a committee, as administrators, as community, all stakeholders, we're going to need to reach out to our elected officials in Boston that this change would benefit Southbridge and communities like Southbridge and will in essence benefit the entire state. If we can move the entire MCAS scores higher, we would be in much better shape. So those are some of the highlights I took away from the conference. I look forward to attending that again. It was great networking. We did meet the young gentleman who's overseeing the Holyoke Public Schools right now, as well as many, many other people. Some people we knew, some people we were brand new to. So it was a great opportunity and I want to thank the committee for allowing me to go.
Any other discussion by members? Mr. Levo?
I just want to say, kind of piggyback on what Mr. Jovan said about the Big Old Turkey Bowl. Last year was a big success. Some of the charities that were supported were Toys for Tots, Worcester Food Share, and some other local charities. They benefited greatly from the attendance of the community and I want to welcome the community to come out there. Yeah, we're probably a bunch of old beat-up guys and girls.
I'm playing.
Ladies. And it's fun, it was a good time. Family was all out there and we had a great time. I want to wish the JV and the varsity football teams good luck in the Chicken Bowl and the Turkey Bowl this year. And I also want to say a happy Thanksgiving to the community out there. And that's all I have.
Mr. Levo, are you on the injured reserve list? I heard you pulled a muscle.
I'll be at the game.
Play it through. True soldier. Anything else on the Members' Forum? Dr. Page?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, happy Thanksgiving to everyone and good luck at the game Thursday, next Thursday.
Any other discussion, Members' Forum? If not, moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, Executive Session. One pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, C30A, 21A. Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. One acting slash assistant superintendent. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozlo?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?